Welcome to the September 23, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Dan Lewis from the Troy Christian Chapel to lead us in the invocation. Please rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Pastor?
Shall we bow for prayer? Heavenly Father, we come to you in all times of our life, sometimes in distress, sometimes when we face circumstances that seem to us overwhelming, but we also ought to come to you in the ordinary times of life. And thank you for the blessings that you give. We are very much blessed. We thank you from our hearts. We ask that we may be truly thankful. We ask for your blessing upon this council, upon our city, and we pray for your guidance in this evening's meeting. We ask this in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And Cindy Stewart, the Community Affairs Director, will make a presentation for the Employees for Cause program. Good evening.
Good evening. It's my pleasure again to come before you because the employees get to dress casual on Fridays, and we raised $792 for the Judson Center Autism Connection. And this is Janice Morgan, and she's going to tell you a little bit about our charity.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To be here, thank you so much. Thank you to the employees of the city. What a great thing to do. Judson Center has been in the area for 89 years with family services. And we have focused on child welfare and disability services. This gift is to our Autism Connections program, which is pretty important. When parents get a diagnosis of autism, they often don't know where to begin. They're baffled, they're surprised, and there are so many ways of handling it that they often just are overwhelmed. Autism Connections is there for these families to provide support and services, both to the children affected and to the siblings and the parents, by providing a variety of therapies for the children and programs for the siblings and the parents to help the whole family grow and to help the child affected to get the most out of life that we can. We are there with some very intensive and very well-trained staff who are very dedicated, and it's wonderful to see the progress made. One mom was ecstatic when we finally helped her eight-year-old become toilet-trained because she'd been trying for so long. And that was just the start of his progress. And he really, he's collected, he's begun to, now has a handful of about 20 words that help his day go easier because he can communicate better with his mom. His mom is having a better time because she can respond to him better. That's just one little example of the kinds of things that we deal with on a big level. With one in 88 children being diagnosed now, according to the CDC, the latest numbers, with some form of autism, and there's a wide range of how it's affected, this gift is going to help a lot of people in our area and support them and know that they've got community support. It helps our very dedicated staff know that they're appreciated, too. So, thank you very much. And what a great thing. And your staff are wonderfully generous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no carryover items, so our next order of business is public hearings. This evening, we have a public hearing for the adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Six for MJR Troy Grand at 100 East Maple. So, I will open the public hearing and call on the Director of Economic Development, Mark Miller.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I will provide a summary of the public hearing item. And we also have Mr. Mike Mahalish from MJR Theater and Mike Kulka from PM Environmental, their consultant, who will also have a short presentation. First, I want to stress that this is a very important project for the City of Troy and the community, and all parties have come together to make this happen. And in that, we have what we call a local site remediation revolving fund, also known as the LSRRF. But for the sake of convenience and easiness, I'll refer it to the loan fund from now on. It's just simpler. The loan fund has approximately $552,000 in the current year budget, and the funds can be used through a policy which was adopted by City Council in the past. And basically, it's a loan program to encourage redevelopment of sites through the Brownfield plans. This Brownfield plan will capture increased tax valuation, but it will not capture school tax that would require the state strategic fund approval, and this does not do that. This BRA plan provides for a loan, which is a 3% simple interest, collateral by MJR. The loan amount is $498,079. And the loan will be reimbursement from tax capture. In other words, the Brownfield, if approved, will capture increased tax valuation, which will then be used to repay the loan, which was loaned to MJR. And that'll be for actual expenditures. I would also note that there are other activities which are being reimbursed directly from tax capture, and that's just under $12,000, and that's for environmental site assessments and the BRA application fee. There are two versions of the plan submitted to you. The first version is as recommended by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and that plan includes a provision to provide for five years of additional capture to reimburse the loan fund. And so, what that means is that after the loan is paid off and the eligible expenditures in approximately nine years, there would then be five years of additional capture, which then would add additional funds to the loan fund. Plan B does not include that five years of additional capture. Besides that, they're exactly the same. I would note that we, we being the City Council for this public hearing, need to continue the public hearing to the next meeting on October 7th to ensure proper notification of two taxing jurisdictions. And so, you have a resolution included today that does just that in front of you. It will continue the public hearing to October 7th. But you can discuss the item in great detail if you so desire and ask questions of both staff and the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody else that was going to speak this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and thank you for the opportunity for this whole program. This was very important to us. We're real excited about expanding our brand to City of Troy. It fits geographically well into our other locations, and I think this is going to be a win-win situation for all of us. I think it's going to be very good for MJR, but I also think that based on our prior experience, the last new theater I built was in the community of Westland, right on Wayne Road. Westland's always been a very vibrant community. You know, it got a little old, a little tired, and I think if you talk to anybody in the city of Westland right now, they'll tell you that there's been several new restaurants. The mall is spending four or $5 million to renovate their entrances and their outside of their mall, and it's just created a real excitement in the area. And I suspect in this part of Troy that once we get up and running, I think you'll see the same result. So, this is going to be, you know, everybody uses the word "state of art." This is truly going to be a state-of-the-art building, and I'm very proud of the fact that we're going to roll out our own version of the large-format screen, which is similar to what IMAX does. It's an 80-by-43-foot screen. It's overstuffed, oversized chairs, 56 inches apart, 26 inches wide. There's new sound systems now that will be our first installation of that. You know, just not to bore you, but loud doesn't make it great. Sound should not be painful. If we ran our sound systems the way the studios would like us to, you could hear it in the next community. And I don't believe in that. But what these new sounds do with the, there's a multitude, there's three times as many speakers in these auditoriums, but the sound is biamped and the sound is separated so that the sound effects come out of one set of speakers and dialogue comes out of others. The result is that the dialogue will be crisper, clearer for some of us that don't hear like we used to. It makes watching a movie far more enjoyable. So, anyway, our plan is we're moving along. If you've been by there lately, the Kmart building's basically a pile of rubble. We hope to be able to start putting foundations in the next two weeks. We hope to be enclosed by December, and we will be open next spring, hopefully the very end of April. So, if you have any questions or comments, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Fleming?
I'm personally excited about having you open as well, but just have a question. When you were making the decision on this particular location, were you taking into consideration at the time use of Brownfield development funds for this cleanup? Was that even a consideration in your decision?
Not in the beginning, but however, as the negotiation went on with the landlord, you know, my preference was to be to buy the property. This property is owned by three families that have owned it for a long time. They felt that to sell it, that the tax burden would be excessive, and so they wouldn't lease it. And there was some contamination on the site, which became an issue. And when the Brownfield possibility came up, we had not made a deal. And quite honestly, I thought at the time it was about 50/50 if we're going to make the deal because they didn't want to take responsibility for cleaning up all the contamination. So, even though I know there's no guarantee, I felt confident, and I thought it was a good possibility. So, you know, I rolled the dice, and you know, I wanted to be open by next spring. Otherwise, I couldn't start till next spring, and it might not be open, you know. So, anyway, so, yeah, it was an important consideration. Thank you.
Was there another?
Yeah, Mike Kulka from PM Environmental.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Kulka. I'm with PM Environmental, and I've been serving as the environmental consultant throughout this project. And kind of to expand on Mike's comment, I worked with them on the Westland Theater, which was, I believe, about a 20-year-old former theater, and we looked at Brownfield on that. When this project came to fruition, I actually emailed them when I saw it noted on cranes, and I said, "Have you looked at your environmental issues?" He said, "Well, I believe there's some work that's been done, and it's fairly minor." Once we dug into it, this is a Kmart from 1964. Many people think, "Well, what could be wrong with that?" Service operations with five hoists, there was underground tanks, there was underground oil vaults. The other theater we worked on had no asbestos at all. This theater had over $135,000 in asbestos abatement. So, there was demolition costs, asbestos costs, the environmental investigation costs, cost to remove hoists, that are all things that I think from the surface, one would think that this is a retail site that wouldn't really have any environmental issues. The more we dug into the due diligence, we found that there was really a significant need for a Brownfield on a project of this nature and this magnitude. So, that really did evolve. So, I'm here to just answer any technical questions you may have about the process, what we're doing. I have backup documentation of all the different costs that we've accrued to come up with a reliable plan for this program.
Thank you. Any questions at this point?
And if any of you have any questions in the interim, I may not be able to be at that next meeting, so I'm hoping to answer any technical questions. Mark can provide my contact information, and I could talk to any of you independently offline if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I know Council did ask some questions prior to the meeting, and those questions were answered for us this evening. Anyone on Council have any further questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item this evening? Okay, there's a resolution to continue. Would somebody like to move that resolution?
Mayor? Mayor, one thing that may be helpful to us is that there are two resolutions, Resolution A and Resolution B. One is the additional five-year capture. Obviously, you can't vote on it tonight, but it would be helpful to us if we had some consensus as to whether or not Council preferred to go with the additional five years or to adopt the BRA's recommendation, which is the BRA's recommendation, or to not capture for that additional five-year period of time.
Anybody want to go first? I'll support the recommendation from staff, myself, but let me ask staff. If we hadn't captured funds before, we wouldn't have any funds to use today. Is that correct? Or, Ms. Bloom, could you? So, that's the process that we typically use to have funds available for these type of projects?
Correct. We have money in our revolving loan fund based on the Midtown Square development. That money, however, we have worked out a loan agreement, so there is a requirement to pay back the proceeds that are dispersed in the environmental cleanup. So, you will have that money back into the revolving loan fund, the maximum amount.
Councilman Henderson?
The loan amount that we're talking about with this particular project is, let's use round numbers, a half a million dollars. Do we, if we, in the nine years that it takes to pay that back, we'll have another half a million dollars in that account, correct?
Correct. As the increment comes due, yes.
Okay, so after nine years, Plan A is requesting an additional, or after nine years, an additional five years of tax capture so we can make that an even bigger account?
Correct.
How much does staff feel that is really necessary in that account? If $500,000 is there now, do we need double that?
I think it's a little difficult to predict how many Brownfield sites there are. I will tell you that this is the first time that we have used the revolving loan fund, and it's been out there for a few years.
The whole city has been deemed Brownfield, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, if someone was buying a house and they found an oil tank in the backyard, they could apply for Brownfield funds? Yeah, I mean, because it's a Brownfield. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, Anderson.
I guess this is a protection, basically, for the future that, take the Kmart site, for example, or any other site that might get redeveloped, to have these funds available in the future. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, also going forward, because we don't have open land where we're going to be developing projects where there's never been anything before, pretty much anything in the future, although we can't see what it might be now, it's likely to be some type of redevelopment. So, I think for that reason, I would support what's recommended by the BRA also.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Just my concern, we're going to spend this entire fund down on this one project, and like Councilwoman McGinnis is saying, I'm pretty certain there are going to be others because everything's redevelopment, especially over around the 15-mile area. So, what's going to happen in the interim if someone has another location? Where will the funds come from?
It is possible to do another tax increment financing jurisdiction. I mean, that is a possibility. Also, it's a reimbursement basis for these expenditures, and as the increment is received, it will be paid back. So, it won't, I mean, it'll be incrementally paid back over that eight-year period or nine-year period, however long it takes.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, but still, the concern is if next month, we have a situation where we have someone with a large business and they want to develop it and they apply for the funds, they're really not available at this point. They would be available over time unless we created another...
Correct. Another incremental...
I'm going to call, if it's okay with Mr. Miller, you know, anxiously is signaling that he may have an answer for you, Mayor and members of council.
Just for clarification, and as an example, the Midtown Square, when that project first went through, there was no revolving loan fund.
Right.
And what we did was the exact opposite of what we're doing here. The party that was doing the development up-fronted the money. We captured taxes and paid them back for the eligible expenses with interest. In this particular case, with a revolving loan fund, you upfront the costs. We're paying ourselves back, basically, with interest. So, if another project comes along, it will be up to the developer to upfront the money, and then we would reimburse them over a period of time with tax capture.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense. Feel comfortable with consensus?
We probably will bring them both back in the next meeting, both.
Councilman Campbell, did you?
I agree. I think we should go with a, I think we, didn't we try to use the Brownfield on the Kmart headquarters, too? And, I mean, $500,000 was never even going to touch that one, but that was into the multi-millions, if I remember. So, we do have a lot of property. We're going to need a lot of help on, so I think we should get as much as we can to rebuild that fund, so.
So, I think you had consensus there.
So, if I understand correctly, let me weigh in here. Councilman Campbell is saying he would go with the additional five years. You're saying you would not go with the additional five years, or?
No, I said I would support the...
Good, okay. Well, I'm on that page as well.
Councilman Teetz?
If the account was zero today, this would still be available, except the city wouldn't upfront the money. What we're doing today is upfronting the money and then hoping, no offense to the business owner, that the business is viable for nine years to pay back, to pay back the loan. And so, whether or not that five years additional collection is there, it'll still be possible to do the same thing. So, I guess I would, to my point of view, is that the city is the one that's taking on the risk by having this money there because we are upfronting the money, hoping that the business that we choose is viable. And so...
I just need to, one thing that we did not point out beforehand, and before we can use the revolving loan fund, there is a requirement that there be a guarantee or that we be able to, you know, somehow recoup that money. We do have a personal guarantee that, you know, would, that that money will be repaid. So, any disbursements that are made will be reimbursed to the City of Troy Revolving Loan Fund. So, I just wanted to make that clarification because it seems critical to your analysis.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
And a counterpoint to that, I would just say, is that I'm looking at it more as a tool to attract businesses to consider looking at Troy as a venue. There may be a developer in the future that says, "I can have the money upfront," but there may also be a developer that that's not an option to them, but they would be able to make a personal guarantee so that they could pay it back. So, I think by not having this tool available to us, we could potentially be shutting out a terrific project or a terrific business that could come and utilize this to make Troy the right location. So, I would still think it's something that would be beneficial to us.
I agree. Councilman Henderson?
The only point I'd like to make is that in the nine years, we're not going to have any of that money additional recaptured. It's only going to be after nine years. So, we're already going to be back whole in that program after nine years. So, I'm in favor of going forward with this project, but I don't want to be in a position in the next meeting where I, you know, I'm compelled to vote no on a project like this because we're trying to overreach and overgrab more funds to put into a project when we haven't, to date, used any of these funds for any other projects. And there are other means to get the same thing done without having an excessive amount of money sitting around, waiting for that project to come along.
I understand your position. I agree with Councilwoman McGinnis, though. I think it's something that we could use to our benefit. Mr. Miller?
Mayor and Council, just a fact I just want to put forward. There were amendments to the Brownfield Act in December of this year, which made it easier for companies and people to utilize. We don't know exactly what the result, if it's going to make more people interested in using. One thing is you can reimburse after, which makes it more valuable for some developers. Just noting that, that...
Mark, when was the last time that someone used that Brownfield fund?
The loan fund has never been used. In fact, we divested 80% of it and returned the money to the taxing jurisdictions. The Midtown Square really was very successful in recapturing and funding it, but we just had no, no one ever requested it. And I think in this case, the amendments that were in effect in December of last year may have made it easier to use for developers. But time will tell. And generally, we don't get much response or request to use Brownfield in any form historically.
Councilman Pennington?
But with someone using it now, do you think it's possible that you may get those applications in the future to where, you know, it's kind of a no-lose situation to have that extra five years of capture to build up more of that fund?
We, myself and Glenn Laypen is here, always bring up the Brownfield as an option potential, and we really don't have a lot of interest. And it's tough to say. It's a balance between, you know, saving those dollars for the taxing jurisdictions or building up the fund, and that's really what this comes down to. I really can't estimate that, how much action we're going to have. Certainly, we have a lot of redevelopment potential. A lot of it's even industrial properties, but I really can't project how much frequency would be, it would be used.
Well, I know a lot of us at the table listen to the administration when they make recommendations to us, and I'm not hearing a strong recommendation from staff that we need to do the extra five years. Am I missing something?
No, we did not recommend to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority the five-year capture, but the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did recommend it. It was, it was our opinion that the funds would be better used for the taxing jurisdictions. But as I want to make sure you know, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did recommend the five-year capture.
Well, from my perspective, I think I'd like to see A and B be brought back for the next meeting, and I personally need to talk to a couple more people before I make my decision. So, if you could bring back A and B for staff, for council. And Councilwoman McGinnis, did you want to move the resolution? And Councilwoman McGinnis, did you want to move the resolution?
Sure. I will move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve the resolution to continue the public hearing to September 23rd, or October 7th, I'm sorry, 2013. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for coming this evening. Unfortunately, we have to continue this until October 7th, so, thank you. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment for items on the agenda this evening. So our next order, there are no postponed items. First order of business is regular business, boards and committee appointments. I do have an appointment this evening.
Mayor?
Mayor? The...
I don't have anyone signed up for public comment?
On the agenda?
On the agenda? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not on the agenda.
I have some signed up for items not on the agenda. So resolved that the mayor of the City of Troy hereby forwards the following nominated person to serve...
Mayor? I'm sorry to interrupt you. I-1 is appointments from city council appointments?
Those first?
Yes, please.
Mayor Protem Fleming, did you want to move those, the appointments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Under I-1, we have some appointments here. Resolved, the city council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. First of all, we have the Animal Control Appeal Board, Patrick Carolyn, for the term expiring 9/30/2016. And for the Parks and Recreation Board, we have Jeffrey Stewart, for the term expiring 9/30/2016 as well.
Move by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we appoint Patrick Carolyn to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term to expire 9/30/2016, and Jeffrey Stewart to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term to expire 9/30/2016. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations. Now we'll do I-2. Mayor nomination resolved that the mayor of the City of Troy hereby forwards the following nominated person to serve on the boards and committees as indicated at the next regular city council meeting for action. The Downtown Development Authority, I will nominate Albert Papa for the at-large position for the term to expire 9/30/2017.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we nominate Albert Papa to the DDA Board for the term to expire 9/30/2017. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will make the nomination for the other vacant position next meeting.
No other names to move forward this, this meeting.
Okay. There is a request for a closed session, I-3. Mayor Protem Fleming?
Bittner, resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E, May as personal representative of Jesus Galliard versus City of Troy at all.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we meet in closed session this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item of business is I-4, liquor license application from Simbad Inc. regarding transfer of all stock interests. And we have a A and a B. And I would just point out that there was an addendum to the resolution placed on the table this evening that maybe I would first ask City Attorney Bloom to discuss the changes that were placed this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We did give you a new resolution on the table tonight, and that is because we have talked to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. This was a liquor license that was placed in escrow, and they have some specific language. And rather than, you know, gum this up a little bit, we wanted to get their input. And unfortunately, we didn't receive it until after the agenda was printed. So, so that, so this resolution that's on the table reflects the language that they require in order to remove it from the escrow and then also to do the transfer. I would also indicate that this resolution also requires there to be a review in front of this body next year, whether or not there is a citation for sales of alcohol to minors. So that's another addition that is in here. Also, we have included the tips and Tams training within 90 days. That's consistent with what you normally would do, and it's going to be required anyways, but that's also incorporated into this resolution, proposed for your consideration.
Thank you. Does that replace A? And then we have B and C?
Yes, this would replace A.
Okay.
And then you'll still need to...
Still need to do B and C, correct?
Yes, you should, you should also pass B as well, and C certainly.
Okay, I know the police department wanted to make a small presentation before this, so I'll call on Chief Mayor. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, thank you. Because of the complexity of this issue, I felt it was good to give a brief overview and see if there's any questions. The police department had problems in the past with the current stockholder of this establishment and the manager that he was using. There were three incidents that occurred in a very short time period, and I'm sure you all recall that we objected to their license being renewed, and the city council passed a resolution of objection to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and the license was not renewed and was placed in escrow. The PD worked closely with the city attorney's office and conducted a very thorough background of the people purchasing this business. Just because of the violation history of that location, the PD and the city attorney staff, Julie DeFran, who's here, and myself, as well as other members of our departments, met with the owners, the new owners, and the new applicants, I should say, and their attorney and other people. We had a frank and open discussion. We all expressed our concerns with the business and some of the problems in the past. They satisfactorily answered all of our questions. I'm more than willing to give detail on that meeting if the council desires, but I could summarize it by stating that we do not object to the matter moving forward to the Liquor Advisory Commission meeting. Liquor Advisory Committee met with the applicants. They had concerns, asked several questions to clarify the relationship of all the parties, and they clarified how the business will be funded. The committee voted to approve that request, so I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Mayor? Councilman Pennington?
Chief, just so it's clear to the citizens, the new owners and the old owners have the same last name, but they're not related. When I read that, it was a little confusing until it, you know, I just want to make sure that's clear.
That's a very good observation. We did check into that and directly asked the question and checked, and they are no relation.
Okay.
Just coincidence, they have the same last name.
Okay. And you're convinced of that?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. So, and the other question I would have was, you had a problem with one of the managers, the old managers, Mr. Zora. Can you go into that detail a little bit? Because he's going to still be working with the new owners.
He is, but not in any management capacity. He's going to be more in a booking capacity to bring in customers and that. We're satisfied with that. He had some criminal history issues that we brought to the new owners' attention that they weren't aware of, and they went in a different direction with the management. I can't emphasize enough that we made sure they understood the City of Troy's policy and how aggressive and assertive we are on liquor control issues, how we have regular police officer presence of going into establishments by uniform officers, how we have plainclothes officers that go in with decoys and check to make sure that people aren't selling to minors. And with this establishment having a past history, they know and they're on alert that we are going to be watching them, just as we would anybody that was in this kind of a role. I think we got that point across. We had a lengthy and frank discussion, and this is the first time in my recollection when we've done that with a liquor establishment, because we want to make sure there isn't any problems.
Last question would be is, how long ago did that license go into escrow?
I'm sorry, how long was it in escrow?
Yeah, how long ago was that?
From March of this year until current.
The new license year starts in April, and so it would have been with the new license year, so since April.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, it's, it's kind of tied to a question that Councilman Pennington asked, and it's just because I've noticed this now, this is the second agreement where we've actually had to specifically name a person that we're listing cannot serve in a certain capacity. And I trust that you feel like you've really delved into this issue quite deeply, and you feel very comfortable with the responses that you got. But just because this is the second time that we're seeing an agreement that specifically lists a person, do you feel that that's going to take significant amount of time? Is that something you're going to be actively having to monitor? Or is that really something that's in here, and you feel like because it's in the agreement that it's, it's going to be followed through with? I just don't, I don't want to see us get into the business of making these very specific exceptions, where then that's going to be time that needs to be spent, I'm assuming, by the police department to make sure that a specific person isn't doing a specific task. So I want to know that you're reasonably confident that this is something that the parties are going to take part in without really having to spend a lot of time and resources monitoring that.
I am reasonably confident of that, and it's the old trust but verify. We, we made the, we'll make the area cars aware. We've already, we've got all the data we need and photographs and that. We'll make them aware, and when they go in and do their checks, they will inquire who the manager is and check on that. So it's part of the routine. It is a little bit more than what we normally do, but it isn't that much of an effort. And since we do our best to have the same police officer work the same patrol area, and they're checking the same establishments, so they get to know it, they should be able to ascertain who the manager is, start knowing who the manager is, and then when they see someone different, be able to take action. But it is a good question. I think, I think we're prepared for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yeah. I know that I follow this closer than, than some because of the history, but I'm confident that this, these new owners have been put through the wringer, so to speak, and vetted and verified by the police department as well as our city attorney. And I think the agreement you've come up with is, is good. And I would move the resolution, I-4A, as amended here on the table today, as well as B and C in our agenda, which is to transfer this all-stock interest and see the agreement as printed.
Do we have a second? Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution that is on the table plus B and C. Is there further discussion? I just would like to say that I agree with the comments that were made at the table this evening, and I hope in, when we review this in 2014, that we didn't make a mistake. So the vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Thank you. Our next order of business is I-5, a request for waiver of bid for purchase of fire apparatus. And you see the fire department walking forward. Chief Nelson will make a presentation. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. This project culminates about six months' worth of research that has been undertaken by Fire Station 4, Assistant Chief Pavian, and his command officers. We, I think we gave you the history in the memo, but basically, we started using a retread hazmat truck. We adaptively reused it as a heavy rescue truck for, we've been doing it almost five years now, and we've had a lot of issues with it. We did use it to kind of perform a proof of concept, which basically says, "We need it. We have a lot of equipment that we don't want to put in every fire station, because it doesn't really need to be duplicated." So by putting it all in one truck, we can get it wherever we need it. Each fire station has its basic complement of extrication equipment, but everybody isn't going to carry airbags to pick up cement trucks, and everybody's not going to carry concrete cutting equipment and things like that that we need on, on occasion. So basically, the results of the study were that Chief Pavian and his officers traveled around, looked at a number of rescue deliveries that had been made in the state of Michigan. They actually went all the way to Atsigo County to look at a truck that was delivered up there, to make sure that we were getting the best idea of what we needed. Their conclusion, and I concur with it, is that Pierce makes the best heavy rescue. Livonia recently took delivery of one. Independence Township recently took delivery of one. And we can see those trucks in action, and we can see, basically, how well they're constructed. There are a number of special features that we have on this rescue. We have a 30 KW generator. We have a pump for hydraulic units, so that we can basically use it for extrication. And one of the most interesting things is we actually have put a breathing air cascade system on it, so that we can use it to replenish air bottles at the scene of structure fires. So it, it basically is, we think it's the best approach. It standardizes the cabs with our other five Pierce pumpers that we have, and it standardizes parts inventory, it standardizes some training issues, and we feel that that's the best approach. And Chief Pavian and I are here to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief? Mayor Protem Fleming?
Just to confirm, chief, this was included, anticipated and included in your budget?
Yes, sir.
Basically, you're just asking for approval for what you've already budgeted.
Yes, sir.
Right. That was my comment also. So thanks for doing your due diligence and bringing this forward. Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
I'd just like to move that we request a waiver of bid for purchase of the apparatus as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. Anyone at the table wish to pull a consent item? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I can move the resolution, though.
Okay.
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
By Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve all items on the consent agenda. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anyone who's here on a consent agenda item, they were all approved this evening. Next order of business, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none this evening. So we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. We'll call on Sandra Miller, Troy resident. Good evening.
I'd like to make a few comments about...
I'd like to make a few comments about the condition of the library. It would be nice if the City of Troy, the city council could walk through the library, see the conditions. I mean, the carpeting is so dirty, it's unbelievable. That should have been replaced before the financial difficulties in the city, and why it wasn't, I don't know. I know they went and remodeled the bathroom. Why they remodeled the bathroom when the city's intent was to build a new library? The people in the City of Troy, they don't want a new library. They turned down originally the first millage. I don't understand why there's so many problems at the library over there. They have a cleaning lady that just sits there, doesn't do anything. She's, she's there to clean the library. She just looks at people in their faces and she smiles. I have complained several times about this person. All she does is stand there and talk to the library employees, or she sits down. The supervisors, the director of library, no one has done anything about this cleaning lady. And then I finally said something to her, and she made all these nasty comments to me in the bathroom. I put a complaint on her. I even called the cleaning company. I'm hoping she's replaced, or she's not. For some reason, the City of Troy wants me to post civil suit on the City of Troy. I had issues with the no hot water in the bathroom after they remodeled the bathroom. I've been complaining for years about that, ever since that was remodeled. They finally put some hot water in the bathroom after, I went over to the building operations last week and complained about the lady not cleaning and the hot water. So they finally did after years, and that's amazing because they have hot water in the bathroom in the city, but they do not have hot water in the bathroom in the library. Now they do, it's a little warmer now after I complained. But why no one can simply walk over there and see the conditions? The programs there are terrible. That's someone who simply has poor taste. She's not able to give us any good programs at the library. I did, was up here a few months ago, I complained about, I'm the one that circulates the petitions. I go on the road. Actually, I've been home for almost the last year, so I've seen what went on at the library. And I neglect to say, when they came out and screamed at me, the assistant director, Philip Quick, came out and screamed at me, told me, I can't stand on this property, I have to stand over here. I can stand wherever I want to in that public library and circulate any petition I want to, as long as I'm not standing directly in front of the door. Actually, I saw them circling your petition when you were running for mayor, Dan Slater, Jeannie Stein, the unemployed attorney, which is in the audience right now, standing directly in front of the door. Nothing was said about them. Nothing was said when they were doing the save the library petition, but when I'm standing there with a little petition and I have the assistant director screaming and yelling at me, I have the director calling the police on me, and the police officers came out and laughed about that. They wanted me to stand 500 feet from the door. I mean, why is it so difficult circling a petition at the public library? Why is it we have a cleaning lady over there that just sits on her butt and she doesn't do anything?
Thank you.
Supervisor and the director, they haven't done anything about that. I mean...
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's basically a slap in all Troy residents' faces, essentially just the financial difficulties.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Our next speaker is Toby Goslin, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, council and city management. I wish to thank Councilwoman Maureen McGinnis for her exemplary leadership and grace while on council. Councilwoman McGinnis, you served with honor, integrity, and mindful awareness, and remain a dedicated problem solver. You inspire me and leave big footprints for others to follow. Together with your fellow council members, you built relationships and trust with positive outcomes. There is peace and calm in Troy. Council meetings have been productive, quick, and efficient. Take pride in knowing the city is doing well. Troy recently received two impressive honors. Number one, chosen the number one city in Michigan to raise a family by nerdwallet.com, and SEMCOG Sustainable Community Recognition Award. Voters elected a mayor that is working in the best interest of the city as opposed to the career politician whose self-serving goal was to receive taxpayer-funded lifelong perks bestowed on elected officials in Lansing. Also, the library, the transit center, and the exemplary Troy school system reflect an impressive pedigree we share and enjoy. Having said that, last council meeting, in the spirit of moving forward, I chose to sit on the other side of the aisle to test the air and differing perceptions up in that top-left corner. Beyond the routine flatulence that emits from the buffoons, I witnessed embellished bravado and threats of another lawsuit at the podium. It has become a routine for these people to huff and puff as if they have a clue what they're talking about. Facts prove them wrong over and over again. The truth is in the facts. As the November election draws near, Troy voters must do their homework and research the background and character of the candidates, attend the candidates' forum, and then go out and vote. Choose the best and brightest to serve on the council. Seek only those who will commit to represent Troy with honor and integrity as we continue on the path forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Peters, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, people of Troy. I'll be, I've just got a couple of points tonight. First, I hope that the Congress in the United States will get over this stubbornness that they're in right now. I really don't think that they're doing our country very well, and to go down this road that they're going down, this isn't very good for us. I want to talk about Troy for a minute. Down the road from me, there's a house, it'll probably be for sale, but the important thing about this house is that I believe it sits in a wetland, and it, it has frogs. And I brought this up before, when they put a subdivision just to the east of that, and they put, they put the sub in and the frogs went. So I would hope that somehow we can accommodate that. Across the street, we talked, I believe, I don't know if it was somebody talked, but they did accommodate the subdivision with the natural scenery. Also, I'd like to see a, maybe a corporate fund set up for maybe buying property in the city. If we could somehow, or maybe work in a public-private approach that we could preserve. Now, I know that the golf course on 21 there, but that, at one time, I believe was a wetland or something, and if somehow we could, could accommodate this stuff where we could, now maybe it is, but from what my view, from what I've seen, I just think that we could do a better job of this, and maybe some creative thinking could get this done. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dan Brake, Troy resident. Good evening.
A speaker here at the podium last meeting pointed out how your council has violated Troy's law on how much money can be kept in the city's slush fund or reserve fund. The law says $8 million was today's budget, and the fund has at least $23 million per the city manager's report, and perhaps as much as $30 million according to some with an even better track record of predicting. During council comments, you, Mayor, responded that the city received a really nice letter from Standard and Poor's. What, sir, does your really nice letter have to do with council's lawlessness on this subject? Imagine back in the day when you still held a job. You are out working late one night in your patrol car in a subdivision. Suddenly, a car flashes past you at a very high rate of speed, and you are off in hot pursuit. Soon, you have the car pulled over, and when you walk up to the window, you say, "Mr. Brake, I just clocked you going at least 75 miles per hour in this 25 mile-per-hour zone. In fact, I think you were actually going faster, maybe as much as 100 miles per hour, but we won't know for sure about that until I get my instrument checked in the morning." And I respond, "You just don't get it, Officer Slater. I have a really nice letter from Ford Motor Company right here, and this letter says that my Mustang is a great car, it's perfectly capable of going even faster. And the letter says my car is really designed well, and it's well-maintained, and they even know how they like the way I drive it, getting everything it's got out of it. So, Officer Slater, you can just take your speeding ticket and forget it. We all know that wouldn't be the end of that. In fact, I'm going to get to spend the rest of the night in the City of Troy's very best suite over near Chief Mayor's office, and then I'll have a chat with a judge about it all. So please help Troy's taxpayers, sir. Please tell us how you and council violating the city's speed limit on how much profit the city can keep is any different from the situation I just outlined. You need to get to work on returning at least $16 million to the Troy taxpayers you have illegally taken it from at the point of the sheriff's gun. And Ed Pennington, Wade Fleming, Mayor Slater has hinted that perhaps after the election sometime, council may get around to considering how to spend this illegal tax profit the city has collected. You two are asking the voters to let you keep your seats here on council. Please take time now here this evening, not after the election, to start the ill-gotten tax profit refund process. If you don't, politically speaking, you two may not have a time after the election. Thank you.
That concludes the residents that have signed up to speak this evening. Our next order of business is council referrals. There are none. So it takes us to council comments. Any comments this evening?
I have one.
Okay, Councilman Campbell?
Representative Mr., you and Mr. Brake, you've come before us now three evenings in a row, and can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
You can't. Let me speak up then. You've come before us three times in a row now and have accused us of cheating, lying, and stealing money. I would suggest next time you do that, you have a lot of hard evidence, because I'm getting tired of it, and unless you've got some proof to back that up, I would suggest you just stay in your seat. And you're not, you're not to speak now. You can come up with another speech next week. I think nobody up here is any thieves, nobody's stealing anything. I know that you're working on your next campaign, which is all well and good, but don't try to get somebody else elected on our coattails, because it's really getting old.
Your resolution on $8 million...
Mr. Brake...
Thank you, you're all done.
Mr. Brake, you're out of order. You're out of order, Mr. Brake. Any other comments?
No.
I have a comment. I went to the MML convention the past week, and if you're all wondering why Councilman Henderson has a couple of black eyes, we were, we were at the convention one day, and he was returning, I believe it was Wednesday morning or Thursday morning?
Thursday.
Thursday, trying to come down there to spend the day at the MML convention, and while he was stopped on the freeway, somebody hit him from behind, and thank God, you hit your head.
My least vulnerable spot.
Yes. Anyways, we're all grateful that the car took most of the, the impact and that you're, you're here this evening, sporting a couple nice shiners and a knot on your head, but other than that, I guess you're okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. But we wish you well. Also, I was at the, the awards banquet Thursday evening, and I just like a couple of comments. Councilwoman McGinnis received a Level Two award, and it's not too many that get to Level Two at the MML, and Maureen has been on council for four years, and she's accomplished something that, that many of us would probably take five or six or seven years or longer. Congratulations to Councilwoman McGinnis for achieving a Level Two. She is a great representative for the City of Troy, and if you go to the MML convention, she is very highly regarded, and she's an asset to council, and I'm going to miss her, quite frankly.
Thanks.
Also, I'd like to just mention that I think the highest award that's given out at the MML is the Honorary Life Membership Award, and I would just like to announce that Robin Beltermini received that award this year at the MML convention, and it was very nice to see Troy being a focus at the, at the awards banquet, and she represents the city so well. And when you look at her long list of accomplishments, she got a proclamation from us, I don't know, a month or so ago, and it's just an honor to, to have people like Robin and Maureen represent us, and congratulations to Robin Beltermini. Having said that, if there are no other comments, we are in recess, and we'll reconvene in the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.